Okay, we have a quorum so we can call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. And just to start, I'll talk for a couple of minutes just while we wait because I think there's a couple of other board members that are trying to get on, some technical difficulties. But good evening, everybody. First of all, I wanted to just acknowledge that we wanted to thank as a board and our teachers and our staff and everyone who works for the district because it is Teacher Appreciation Week. We are very grateful to everybody, yes. And it's nice that we have such wonderful staff and teachers and administrators and everyone has really pulled together over the past few months. And I know I speak on behalf of the board when I say we very much appreciate everything that everyone has done. And a special shout out to the parents who have in the past couple of months become teachers of some sort in some facet themselves. So, you know, celebrate yourselves also, give yourselves a nice round of applause because everybody's really pitched in. It really does support the adage of that it takes a village to raise a child in these days. So we want to wish everyone well. We also want to do a shout out to all of our nurses. It's Nurses Day, I've been informed. And our healthcare workers and especially our nurses have been wonderful in just in this entire pandemic and that we owe them a debt of gratitude. So on behalf of the board, a sincere appreciation to them too. Are there any changes to the agenda for anyone? Anything that we need to change or add? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 8th. And you have to unmute yourself to speak.
So moved.
I will make that motion.
I will second it.
Thank you. Thank you, Len, seconded by BJ. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Any changes? Hearing none. I see no hands. All those in favor? I will call a vote by name. So I will start at the way my screen is. So Amy, if you can unmute yourself. How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Andy? Thank you. BJ?
Yes.
Thank you. Len? Thank you. Liz?
Is, I'm sorry, is this to approve the meeting minutes?
The minutes, yes.
I was absent for that meeting.
Okay, so Ann, make a note of that, that Liz abstains. Thank you. Maria?
Yes.
Thank you. And me, I vote in favor. Okay, that's everybody. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to go through the screen for right now. That's everyone that's on. So we have the minutes are approved. Ann, is there any public input?
There is none.
No public input.
Okay, so we would move on to our principal updates. Is there anyone who wants to go first? Hands? Helen, let us know what's going on in Wallingford.
Yeah, the school meets is definitely quirky. Hi, everyone. I love watching everyone's expressions as they try to figure out the mute, the unmute. It's like watching kids all day long. They struggle with the same thing and have these very funny expressions as they try to unmute themselves to talk. So Wallingford is actually doing pretty well. You know, our teachers really jumped into the challenge of distance learning and the pre-K group are doing a closed Facebook group. So all day long, they have different times where their teachers and support staff that work with pre-Kers come on and read a story, do a dance, sing a song, whatever pre-Kers do. So there's activities all day long if pre-K families want to jump on and do something with their teachers. And then the primary units, the kindergarten and first grader using an app called Seesaw. And that's a platform where teachers can post assignments and kids can interact with that and get feedback from their teachers. And everybody else is using Google Classroom, which is, again, the same idea where assignments can be placed and kids can interact with it and get feedback from their teachers. Most of the classrooms are holding Google meets so they can interact with each other and talk with each other and share like they would in a morning meeting. Even some of the teachers are holding differentiated small groups to work on a particular math issue or a writing issue, whatever the issue happens to be. So they really have finessed and figured out how to, how to work these platforms and to do some pretty amazing work. I was watching some lessons this week where it's like, that's really phenomenal lesson that I might even see in a classroom in a building. It's amazing how they figured out how to use Jamboard so it can be a whiteboard. It's interactive and kids are doing things on it and moving things around and talking with their teachers. So it's impressive, the work that they're doing. There certainly have been times when they've hit the wall and can't wait to get back in the classroom with those kids wrapped around them and they miss them dearly. So this week has been a great time for all kinds of appreciations from the PTO. So thank you BJ and Carolyn for such a great video. And teachers put together a video a couple of weeks ago that they sent out to the kids. So it's been great to get that positive feedback to hopefully keep them going for the next five to six weeks. So spirits right now are pretty, pretty good. And I'm, I'm pretty impressed with most of them and the work that they're doing and working hard, harder than they did when they were in the bricks and mortar school, definitely working hard. And we're working with our leadership team to try to figure out how to celebrate our sixth graders as they get ready to move on to Mill River next year. We're putting together a little online celebration. I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you so much, Helen, for sharing with us. Maureen, you're right next to her on my screen. Would you like to go next? You have to unmute yourself first.
Got it. Okay. The kiddos and Timothy are doing well. K3 is using the Seesaw platform and grades four through six are using the Google Classroom. So the staff checks in twice a week on Zoom and discusses how the children are doing, how they're progressing. That allows us to catch the kiddos that are falling through the cracks or might be falling through the cracks. So in general, we're troubleshooting equipment and issues and with a lot of help from Joe B. And we're talking directly with families who haven't been responsive to distant learning. So we, we were fortunate to recruit Cheryl Minary, who's really remarkable literacy expert, to read over the phone with one kiddo, for example, who is home and she's reluctant to do her work and both parents were working outside the house. So it's a pretty challenging situation. So, but I'd say roughly 90% of their students are in routine or holding pattern and 10% are being supported with home visits, material drop-offs, regular emails and phone calls. Staff's working really hard. One went on maternity leave in April and two have completed accelerated online courses that were required for CDD licensing. Our sped teacher, Beth Thompson, is Zooming with all her students. She's working more than I think she's ever worked and she works a lot. That's how to term it. Worked a lot. And she told me today that they're making progress, not just maintaining, they're actually doing well, you know, advancing. So as part of the leadership committee work, we're in the process of building a contingency plan for future distant learning mandates. And these plans are based on what we glean from our current experiences today. And we're preparing to increase the effectiveness of future distant learning for our kiddos, just in case the need arises as it's predicted. But overall, we're succeeding. But like all of us here tonight, teachers, parents and children are pretty weary of working in isolation and they're ready to return to school.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Jody, do you want to go next? You have to unmute. There you go.
Yep, just looking for the button. So, you know, we're plugging along in similar veins at Shrewsbury Mountain School. Our teachers are using a variety of online platforms, Seesaw, Google Classroom, Freckle, depending on the age group. We've just been playing with a variety of resources and figuring out what works for kids and differentiating and personalizing as needed. A lot of our students have said that they enjoy some paper-based learning. So we've had three chances for no-contact materials drop-off so far and pickup. So we lug a bin for every single family outside of the front gates and families come pick it up. We leave the bins out there 24 hours and then take them inside to get anything that the kids have dropped off. So so far, that's working. We'll probably do that one more time. We've gotten computers out to any family who said that they could use one to borrow from the school. All of our wraparound services like counseling, speech, still being provided remotely, our nurses checking in with students remotely. We're continuing with our farm-to-school grant planning because we still are looking forward to our farm-to-school grant through the Department of Agriculture for next year. And that work has to continue on even though we can't be together. I'm really excited. We've continued to coordinate with Sage up in Shrewsbury throughout this time. And because Sage can't come to school to provide farm-to-school education in person, they've been working to create accessible, really awesome videos for kids that they can send home about greenhouses. And so the kids have been really enjoying that and sending in questions. The PTO planned some great stuff for Teacher Appreciation Week this week. My favorite thing is they made some wooden signs to put up around Shrewsbury that thank the teachers. So if you're up in that neck of the woods, look for those. They're really awesome. And I really appreciate all of the community's support for this school during this time. Just, and the parents and community have just been amazing and so good with communicating on what we can do and what we, what they like. So we have a really good idea of how we can serve our students best right now. I'm excited that we're still going to have a field day. We can't do it in person, but we're going to have a virtual remote field day run by Mr. Klochem, our PE teacher. So I'm gonna suit up in a tracksuit, get my sweatbands on and virtual field day in my backyard. And then we're just starting to look forward to next year, just thinking creatively, really taking some time to reflect on what pieces of distance learning we want to carry forward into the unknown, you know, thinking about how we can
I think we lost her.
and best create system, hopefully to be together because, you know, we all miss each other. That's about it.
Great. Thank you, Jody. Fred, how are things in Clarendon?
Going very well. It's, it's amazing what the teachers have come up with when given this challenge and this opportunity. They're videotaping lessons so that the kids can watch them anytime. They're, you know, reading every single day to the kids. They're having video chats, the supporting. My biggest challenge is to have the parents relax and just not fret about things. And I say that every time I, I push out a letter, but I think, you know, they want to do the best that they can do out there as well, you know. And they're trying and I think they're feeling a little bit overwhelmed. And so we're just trying to push it back, push it back a little bit more each time. So, you know, giving them a day to catch up. Those kinds of ideas of stuff that we're working with the parents is helping out a great deal. Much like the other ones, we let the teachers use the platform that they were using in the classroom with the kids. So that allowed us to just hit the ground running right from day one. And, you know, very enthusiastic about getting all of the curriculum out and getting started. And then when we, we realized this wasn't going to be just two weeks or three weeks, then we started thinking about, okay, we know our kids, you know, what's their basic needs? What part did we play in that before? And now what part should we play in that now? And like many of the other ones, we've been running around getting computers to folks and, you know, when their phone breaks down or their iPad breaks down, we get them another device. Joe's been instrumental in trying to get connectivity to some of our folks that didn't have it. Got to give credit to our guidance counselor, Paula. She is reaching out multiple times daily to a number of different kids and families to help support them in, in all of their endeavors. But we've got some kids that have accelerated their learning. I mean, because they have the opportunity to sit on the computer at their time, at their leisure, and just research. And some of these kids are way ahead. Mike is extremely excited about the progress that four or five of his kids have made in math. They're up doing eighth grade math, which, you know, before they left, they were about grade level. And because they've had an opportunity to really excel, they've done that. We're sending out a newsletter that has some pictures about all of the home lessons that are going on and the stuff that the kids are doing, like real world kind of lessons. And we're going to share that with everybody too. So, you know, it's, it's, the thing that you worry about is the social and emotional piece because the kids aren't together. They don't have that peer-to-peer. We don't get to see their eyes, their body language. But we're definitely connected. It was like a race to see who had 100% participation first and second and third. So that went really well. So I, yeah, I would say this is a piece of what we are able to do moving forward, learning a lot of new skills.
Great. Thank you, Fred.
Answer any questions if you have them.
Oh, does anyone have any questions? I don't see anybody. Thank you, Fred. Tyler?
Okay, since I talked to you guys at the last board, board meeting, we talked about, you know, how we're trying to make sure that our teachers are doing things on a different way and effective way and on a cohesive way. And I'm pleased to really report that our teachers have really stepped up in the last probably two weeks of doing video conferencing with students. That has changed quite a bit. Also, a lot of our teachers now are starting to office, ours to be offer, office hours. So where they are actually online and any student can kind of log in and talk to the teachers as they need to. So that's been something that's been very positive. As you can imagine, we're working towards our end of the year and being a high school. You know, there are some typical end-of-the-year ceremonies that we're having to really change up and make for different plans. I'm sure you saw the email that went out to our staff and also to our community over the weekend about our grading policies, making sure that we are, you know, we know that not every student is taken to remote and distance learning in an efficient and effective way. Excuse me. So that we want to make sure that we are, we're looking out for all of our students. And we, our teachers are adapting to this new way of, of teaching and grading so that we're not harming any children. And we're giving kids options as to how they are assessed and graded during this period of time. And then I'm sure you probably saw the email that went out to, again, our staff and our community yesterday about our graduation. You know, our graduation is going to be a virtual, pre-recorded graduation. Caps and gowns were available for kids to go to school and grab today. And from what I've heard from the people that were handing those out, we had substantial amount of kids go and grab them. So that's good. I mean, we, you know, they were excited to go to school and grab them. It's funny when I, I've made this comment many times, but it's, it's fun going grocery shopping now because at Hanaford, we have a significant amount of our kids that work there. And, you know, it's, it's great to touch base with them and say hi. And it's also really funny of the ones who would, you know, maybe not, you know, when they were in school, they were used to being in school and they would make comes like, oh, you know, I can't wait to get out in the real world. Now they're in the real world and they're working quite a bit. And they're, please get me back in school. Please get me back in school. So, you know, it's fun to really talk to kids and I miss kids in that regard. It's fun to pop into video, video sessions with them. You know, they're, they're doing their best. They're plugging along. We're, our teachers are reaching out to them, like I said, in many different ways. And, you know, we, we're working towards the end of the year. It's coming very quickly. You know, our graduation ceremony that we'll have recorded will go out on June 10th. And then it's also interesting because, you know, we have one foot in this, in this school year and we have another foot in next school year already trying to make those plans and what have you. So it's, it's a very busy time for Mill River, you know, trying to wrap up this year and as most of the traditional ways we possibly can. And then also prepping for next year. So it's, it's a very busy time at Mill River.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Tyler? No. Okay. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
We'll move on to central office reports. So Dave, do you want to lead us off with that?
Sure, happy to. Hello, everyone. First of all, I hope you were able to take a look at our written reports. I want to talk to you tonight just about a few things that aren't directly connected to my written report. But if you have questions on what I wrote, I'm happy to take those. Just a few things to point out to you. One of the items shared with you tonight is the articulation of our four different work groups that we have doing our, our planning for whatever the fall might end up looking like. And I just want to let you know that that process began about a week and a half ago. We had our first level of meetings this week where each group gets together with me and ideas are being bounced off of each other. We're brainstorming. I'm pushing back on different things that I hear. And the groups are mobilized to continue working. So that will be ongoing work. What I need to reassure you with that concept is we're working our tails off to, to make sure that we're making progress toward a still unknown destination. As board members, if any of you have thoughts like, hey, have you guys thought of this? We probably have. But even regardless of that, please reach out to me. If something crosses your mind that you think is, is valid and important, send it my way and I'll make sure to direct that to the right, to the right folks that are doing that kind of work. So my assurance to you is that we're going to be ready for whatever the fall ends up looking like for us. But we really don't know right now. You may ask me to make some predictions later. So I'm going to go ahead and make some predictions for you now. These are only my opinions. These are not based on anything other than my own insight and what I hear and gather from different sources that I interact with. If you ask me today, I think there's a stronger likelihood that we begin the school year in a fully remote scenario than we begin the school year in an in-person scenario. It's my opinion. It's based on what I'm hearing right now. It could change, but that's just my, my thought at the moment. I would say the same thing in terms of opinion about the concept of sports in the fall at the middle school and high school level. Based on what I'm hearing at the moment, it seems unlikely, but that doesn't mean that something won't change. So I just need to put that out there for the group to be aware of. I also think on the financial side, which I know we're going to talk about later on, I think it's very likely that we are going to see the legislature try to find some ways to smooth out some of the big bumps on the financial crisis in the immediate future. But that's not going to make the future crisis disappear in any way. So I do think that there will be a day of reckoning or a time of reckoning where all school districts are going to have to figure out, maybe not so much for FY21, the coming school year, but for FY22, as we build those budgets in about five months, we start, maybe sooner. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of questions up in the air financially. And we will talk a little bit more about that later in this meeting. I want to, I want to share with you that the VSA, the, the Superintendent's Association that I'm a part of, I think it's our advantage. My, my role as president for that group starts in about two weeks. I've already been pretty involved in things at the state level, but I'll be more involved in things at the state level even in a couple of weeks. And we are actively working to try to identify all of the checkpoints and all of the decision points and all of the guidance timelines that we feel that we need in order to successfully plan for what the fall could look like. And we're, we're pulling that all together to really serve two purposes, to help out new superintendents coming into their roles. I don't know if you realize this, out of 52 public school superintendents in Vermont, there are 11 new ones coming in this coming school year. And a good number of those folks are from out of state, so they don't have the Vermont context. So we need to support those folks to be successful in their roles. But we also want to provide whatever input or even push that we can for the agency of Ed and for the governor's office in terms of that guidance we get so that we can make sure that it's in the right timeframe and that things don't come too late. Final comment I'd like to make before I, before I take any questions you may have is I want to advertise our podcast a little bit. I've been pleased with what's, what's been emerging with that. We've had five episodes produced so far. Tammy and Brian started us off with kind of some big picture stuff. We had Fred and a couple teachers, one from Mill River and one from Wallingford, do a session for us. Andrew did a one-on-one interview with me. We had Jody and John McKenna do an excellent interview a couple of weeks ago on our equity work from the, you know, what's happened previously, currently and in the future. And our most recent one, Tyler and Kim Minieri gave us about 40 minutes, minutes of conversation about what we saw coming down the road with our seniors at the end of the school year with, with spring sports and kind of some Mill River-based decisions. So if you're interested in that, you can actually get to it on our website. If you just go to the main page of the millriverschools.org, there's a, there's a link to the, to the podcast on the, the right, upper right corner of the page. So give that a listen if you're interested. With that, I'll, I'll pause and I'd be happy to take any questions or pass it on to Brian, who I think is with us by phone.
Any questions for Dave? Hearing none. Okay, Brian, if you would like to jump in and give us your report, that would be great.
Hey, everybody. Well, first, I'd like to take this opportunity to just extend gratitude and appreciation to the board for their flexibility, their hard work in making things happen in these uncertain times. Our educators, our support staff, our, all our certified and non-certified folks, everybody, our custodians, our food service, our bus drivers, you know, our parents, our learners, even the wider community. I think we're doing a lot of work to try and make education happen. But I think it's worth remembering that this is a wider context and it's really the whole community that we're trying to take care of and they're trying to take care of us. So I, huge gratitude for all of that. We've had a lot of things going on in, in my realm. One, one of those big things that's, that's off our plate is actually state and federal assessments. So that's something that you'd normally be hearing from me about now. And here I am to say that we're not doing those. Our teachers, of course, will be looking at, at what their learners are doing and trying to see where they are and what they need to keep progressing. We are doing some background work to try and figure out if we have some, some learners who are potentially slipping through the cracks and to start some planning for next year so that we, we're not just showing up day one figuring out who's, who's fallen behind. We're, we're putting some things in place that might look pretty different. I know Dave said the fall might be different for a lot of reasons. Supporting or struggling learners is going to be something that we really are stepping up and trying to figure out for the fall too. In the tech realm, huge thanks to Karen and Joe and Ann, our library and media folks. They've been really the front lines of getting people what they need, getting them the right-in-time, just-in-time training, triaging, working with families to try and get them resources connected too. So, you know, huge kudos to them, huge work that they've been taking on. And, and our health office staff, of course, too, trying to help manage the medical needs, but also the social, emotional needs. I know that's, that's something that has been a pressing issue anyway. Now, I think more than ever, it's a pressing issue. So huge thanks to all those folks. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Brian? I don't see any. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, yep. Thank you all.
We'll move on to Andrew. Hi, Andrew.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. So like everyone, it's been extremely busy these last several weeks. As I mentioned in the report, one of the things that we were working on initially was the continuity of learning plan that the state asked us to do. And that's also informed some of our thinking moving forward as well. One of the things that is, I've been working with a small work group is focused on rethinking, redesigning kind of our approach to distance learning slash remote learning. So this Monday, we're going to be sending out several surveys, one to teachers, one to parents and one to upper-grade level students to collect a wide variety of information around what's basically what's working, what's not working, what are things they need, just to get kind of a big pool of information to help inform our process moving forward. And really, right now, like Dave was saying, a lot of planning way into the future, into a future that we really have no clue what it is. And so really what that's going to entail is just designing something that's going to be super flexible. The work group that I'm in is Jody, Deborah and Jen Macklemore. And so we've been meeting on a weekly basis and putting together various kind of plans, such as figuring out what our summer professional development's going to look like and putting together what we're calling modules, where teachers can kind of engage in professional learning in an asynchronous manner where they watch some videos, engage in some activities to produce some sort of product. So we're rethinking really everything that we do. And what our goal is to have all of those things squared away before the end of the school year so that we can give kind of our plan and guidance to teachers and start working with them over the summer to be ready for whatever the fall looks like. Planning on the worst-case scenario of, you know, having to go full remote, but also having our plan flexible enough to be applicable to some sort of hybrid or even in the classroom. And so a lot of the work that we've already been engaged with continues forward. It just might look a little bit different. But, you know, things such as having clear and transparent learning targets, providing lots of feedback, personalizing learning and differentiating, those, all those pieces still apply in a distance learning environment. We just have to think about them a little bit different. As the president of the Vermont Curriculum Leaders Association, I was invited to be part of an Agency of Education Task Force. And then within that task force, I was nominated to be the leader of a subgroup that is focused on education for the short term. So this upcoming fall and year in particular, but then also looking at what education looks like over the next five years and how and how we can apply some of the things we're doing right now to thinking about or rethinking how we do education. And so that, those meetings have just started. As I move forward, I've been keeping Dave and I'll keep the board updated with what's going on there. I'm also engaged in other meetings with state-level folks. I met with Dan French last week and Heather Bushy last week as well. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with Lieutenant Governor Zuckerman to talk about some of this stuff. So it's been good to kind of have an ear in Montpelier to kind of see what's going on and also to put the Mill River Voice into the state-level conversation as well.
Great, Andrew, thank you. We'll look forward to hearing about that, more about that. Any questions for Andrew? Anyone? Andy does.
There we go. It takes a while. Andrew, we absolutely do not know what's ahead of us. And I'm so glad to hear the work that you and your folks are putting into being flexible. They're sending out a survey now to see what needs to be fine-tuned. You're having a summer professional development for those faculty members that need more assistance with distant learning. So I'm just very pleased and appreciative of the work that's going in to make certain that whatever comes in the fall, we're flexible and we're ready to meet it. Thanks.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing our best. Thank you.
Any other questions for Andrew? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Coral, you want to fill us in on special ed stuff?
Sure. Hi, everyone. So I submitted a little bit of a lengthier board report to you for this evening just to give you a certain level of detail about how we are pulling off remote slash distance learning, special education services. All in all, I've been very, very pleased about how just incredibly wonderful the special ed staff have been at just getting on their toes and having to do so many things so quickly, like a lot of teachers. We have been able to complete various amendments that we are required to complete IEP so that we can actually deliver the services that we've agreed to with parents. I put it in my report, so I won't discuss it at length. But all of our students are receiving one-to-one services. And we have been able to offer services to parents as well in order to provide them with training and consultations. So everything's going really well, I would say. Yeah, so that's where we are.
Great. Any questions for Coral? Anyone? Nope. Okay, thank you, Coral. Gary, do you want to fill us in?
Sure. Hi, folks. Really not much to add to what's in the written report. You know, things are obviously different for us than they were before. But I don't think we're as impacted as other groups are. You know, if you compare us to how impacted the faculty are, there's really no comparison. You know, we're actually still able to be in the building. We're still able to perform, for the most part, our standard duties. The biggest impact to our group, I think, really is on our construction side. You know, construction activities are basically put on hold at this point in time. Things are starting to lighten up a little bit. We're starting to get a contractor here and there back into the building for some little necessary things, but nothing, you know, we're not pulling the trigger on any major projects at this point. But the good thing is that really allows us to focus on the custodial end of things and from really two different standpoints. We're trying to make the buildings as safe as possible for the few limited people that are in the buildings that are coming in to get, you know, teaching materials and whatnot. You know, we're basically following people around with a spray bottle of disinfectant so that the next person that comes behind them is as safe as possible. But the other thing it is allowing us to do is get a real good jump on our summer routine. We actually have started waxing and cleaning. So things for us, quite frankly, over the summer are going to be a little more relaxed than typical, I think. So we should have an opportunity to really do a good job with having the place ready for what hopefully will be a normal opening. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Does anyone have any questions for Gary? I don't see any. Thank you, Gary. Carrie?
Hi, everyone. Hello. So I gave your report summarizing much of what we've been up to with, in the after-school world. What the site directors are all working on is individualized work that relates to increasing the capacity of their after-school programs for next year. Some of that has been related to credentialing to bump up credentials that allow us to get higher levels of subsidy next year. A lot of professional development work that's going on within after-school. And again, just continuing to plan, to build capacity, and also to increase our funding, which we've actually been successful doing for next year. We know we have additional grant funds than what we had expected to be ready for us, which will be nice and allow us to be nimble. We may have different staffing ratios for after-school in the fall. We don't know based on guidelines. And so again, those additional funds will be helpful. The other piece relates to summer. We have a very active team of leaders that is meeting weekly, both locally, which is our group by video. I'm going to equate this to knowing that we're going to be building a house in July, but we're not quite sure exactly what the design of that house is going to be. However, we have very aggressively and proactively assembled all the materials and all possible materials for that house as far as potential staff, as far as understanding potential requirements that might be in place, depending on the direction that we go with that. Our resources have actually been increased substantially for summer. And I expect to, within a week, have a lot more detail in terms of what that summer plan will be. We continue to be committed to offering some sort of summer enrichment to our students across the district entering grades one through nine. But again, the actual design of that is to come very soon.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Carrie? I don't see any. Thank you, Carrie.
Sure.
Okay, thank you all for joining us. We'll move on. So Dave, we have COVID succession planning next on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. And hey, just again to principals and central office folks, if you need to log off, no judgment at all. So feel free to get on with your nights, except for the couple of you that are hanging around for various things. To the board, you just have a document that was shared with you in the board materials, common sense succession planning in the event that, you know, we do find that people, especially people on our leadership team, fall ill with COVID and have to be away for a stretch of time. Just made sense to design out some sort of plan for who would do what and when. So it's really an informational item for you in general, and I would be happy to take any questions on it if you have them.
Any questions for anybody? No? Thank you for providing that to us. I don't think we have anybody that has any questions. So that's great. So do you just want to go right into what pre-K, summer, and summer meals are going to look like?
Yeah, so two summer-related items. And first, I want to piggyback on Carrie's comments about, you know, summer programs. Right now, the language that we're hearing out of the AOE is talking about summer programs as possible litmus tests for what a fall scenario could look like if we are in person. So if you look at the childcare regulations right now, which is what governs those summer camps and programs, you know, they've still got all the very strict distancing in place, the masks involved, the limited numbers gathering in space, et cetera. So Dan French is talking about, hey, we may want to utilize summer activities, if you will, as a way to practice for what the fall looks like. We have no idea what that means. The official guidance about that has not come up. There has not been any sort of thumbs up that says, yep, go ahead and plan on having summer activities. Like everything right now, it's still very much up in the air, but that's the mindset. So connected to that, several weeks ago, several board meetings ago, we had an initial conversation about a pre-K childcare concept that we wanted to maybe talk about as a board. We have not gotten back to that. My recommendation to the board right now would be, in ideal circumstances, it's still an incredibly important, necessary resource for us to figure out how to put in place. But I would suggest that we are not even anywhere near the environment where we can even entertain that conversation. So I would just like to ask the board on that topic, if we can keep that on a back burner, knowing we want to bring that back into discussion and possible deliberation at a future time, I think that would be great. And then on the summer meals, just an update for you. The community already is aware of this. We have regulatory reimbursement coverage to serve meals through the 30th of June, through the end of this fiscal year. So that is our intention, to continue the meal service plan, where the last day of meal pickup would be Monday, the 29th of June. Just for your reference, the last day of student attendance at school is Friday, the 12th of June. So that gives us a handful of weeks in between there to continue getting meals to folks. Happy to take questions on those two concepts as well.
Does anyone have any questions?
I got one. I have one.
Sure.
Not necessarily on those specific. What about summer driver's ed?
Still nothing on that, Len. There was, well, so first on driver's ed, it's worth you knowing that the Department of Motor Vehicles made a proposal to the State Board of Ed that the driver requirement of time with the instructor, they made a request to waive that and just require that, you know, future licensees only need the required 40 hours with a family member and to pass the test, you know, at the DMV. That got hung up in some, a little bit of lobbying debate, and the state board did not take any action on that. So there's nothing, Len's familiar with some of the politics of that issue. No action has been taken there yet. So we don't know anything about the overall scope of driver's ed. And related to that, we don't know anything, you know, in the realm of whether driver's ed instruction in any way would be able to occur at all. Again, just predicting, my opinion with me reading the signs, it seems like it may be a non-starter just because of the likely restrictions we're still expecting to have in place, but no information coming yet. We are expecting some guidance from the state this coming Friday, addressing some topics around summer, including, you know, the governor's recommendations on, you know, graduation celebrations and gatherings, et cetera. So we may find something about driver's ed in that guidance, but I'm not exactly holding my breath that that'll come this quickly. We'll see.
And the only reason I mention that is, living in a rural area as we do, driver's ed is, getting a driver's license, I should say, is critical to many parents and kids. And although we're not supposed to be out driving around, you know, it still is something that I think we need to do the best that we can to ensure that kids are getting the training that they need to move forward. That's all.
And as a parent of a kid who's due to get his license in a couple of months, I agree. But, you know, Len, we, as you know, we've got to navigate the safety and health component of all that. And of course, the DMV needs that revenue, too. You know, they need people to, need to pay for licenses because that fuels that operation. But the, as with all of this, the health dynamics will be the driving force and we'll see where we are.
Well, and I want to also, in full disclosure, being a former, or no, still a driver's ed teacher, that's kind of where my question came from.
Understood.
Thank you. Dave, I have one quick question. Do you have any idea, is there any rumblings either in Montpelier or through that federal level Coral may even know, with regard to the possibility, since we don't know what's going to happen with summer programs about any sort of extension of meals through the summer in that event? I'm just curious if there's anything.
Yeah, so I might actually, rather than Coral, I might actually defer to Stan on that. Stan, are you able to kind of paint the picture of what the different regulatory frameworks might look like for how meals could or could not be provided in the summertime? I'm putting you on the spot with that.
Excuse me. Right now, the provision for the program we're running now extends to June 30th. There's nothing that has come out that extends that beyond June 30th. That's not to say that something might not happen, you know, but then the next couple of weeks or when there's a clearer picture as to what might happen during the summer. But as of now, the program with being reimbursable would end June 30th.
Great. Yeah, I was just curious, since, you know, the governor put such a big emphasis when we went to remote learning about making sure that meals were provided. So if there's not that summer programs that most people may count on for those, I was just curious, but thank you.
Yeah, and so Tammy, I mean, a simple answer is we could provide meals through the full summer, but getting those meals reimbursable from the feds is not at all guaranteed. So there's a, that's a huge outlay for us to do that.
Right, right. And as we'll hear in a little bit, another thing we have to deal with. So thank you. So any questions at all on that? Any other? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. So personnel, Len, do you have anything to add from a personnel perspective?
I'm trying to unmute myself, sorry. That's like a whole new term. Yeah, we're hoping to complete the superintendent evaluation this summer. I know we had sent, set up some meetings where you, Tammy, and Maria were going to meet with some folks. And I think, I don't think it's a good time to do that right now, just because. But I do want to kind of, I don't want to just push it aside and say, well, we're not going to do it. So I think, and my goal right now is to look at doing something this summer when things have quieted down somewhat. So that's really the only thing that's on the table for the personnel committee.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Len, from anybody? Nope. Okay. BJ, policy?
Okay, policy, we have one, five policies that are coming in for a first reading. We have D-14, the staff wellness policy. We have D-19, payroll during COVID-19 policy. We have the district equity policy, the student wellness policy, and the class size, actually, no, we decided to hold off on class size. So class size, while we had planned for a first reading, we've chosen that, considering the things that are happening and information we're getting, we may need to update that one. And currently, our current policy is pretty much almost identical to it now. So we decided to hold off on updating that one to see if there's more information coming.
BJ, I'm sorry, I included that class size. That was inadvertent. I should have left that one out of there.
I'm going by the email you sent. Yeah, and I think we do have, we had a great policy meeting. I mean, we did, I think we were the first committee meeting over me.
Yep.
I think it worked out well. It got recorded and posted. And I don't know where it got posted, but it got recorded. It was my, I think my first official meet as the chair, too. So that was kind of a, kind of appropriate that the tech guy becomes the chair. First meeting has to be the remote one, so.
And you did well, and you're educating us all on how to operate in Google Drive, so.
So it was a good first meeting. I'm hoping to have another one in May. I don't, I'm, with things changing so much, I think at least a touch base. And then we're going to try and come up with some, if we don't have any policies to review, we're going to at least try and come up with some protocols for reviewing at our next meeting, you know. So that's kind of where we at. Any questions or anything like that?
Are you going to move all the policies at once? Or do you want to go through them one by one for the first reading, for the board to approve?
Is there any reason why I shouldn't move them all at once, taking advice from the chair?
In case there's any discussion on them, maybe we should do them individually.
I move D-14, staff wellness, to the first, or first reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Lenny will second that.
Okay, thank you, Len. Any discussion on D-14? Hearing none. All those in favor, and I will go through the list again. So Amy, you're first.
Aye.
Thank you. Andy? Andy says aye. He's muted and now he's...
No, he's not muted.
So BJ?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye. My computer's slow, sorry.
That's okay. Maria?
Aye.
And Adrian?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So yes, did someone say something? No? Okay. So hearing, all those, hearing every, there are no nays. We've gone through the list. So D-14 is approved for a first reading.
Okay. I move to have D-19 payroll during COVID-19 moved for a first reading.
Second?
Sure. Lenny will.
Thank you. Any discussion on, on D-19?
Yeah.
Hearing. Go ahead.
One quick question. When, when this is passed, how difficult is it to undo it? I mean, do we just ignore it once this whole pandemic is over? Or how does that work? I don't know.
Len, I'd suggest we can quite simply rescind the policy, you know, the similar process we use with other ones and say, we're going to, because it's no longer appropriate. So we've got that option.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. We will go through the list again for a vote. Amy?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
BJ?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Okay. D-19 is approved. And then, go ahead.
I move F-2, district equity policy to a first reading.
And who would like to second that?
I'll second that. It's Liz.
Okay. Okay. So Liz, thank you. Is there any discussion on the F-2 district equity policy? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Amy?
Aye.
Andy? Aye. He says aye. He's giving me a thumbs up. BJ?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Thank you. Maria? Thank you. Adrian?
Aye.
Okay. So the F-12 district equity policy is passed. There are no, no votes. We've gone through the list. Next up, BJ?
Okay. I move to have F-28 student wellness policy. Oh, that was the action. Student wellness policy for a first reading.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that. It's Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Okay. Any discussion on our student wellness policy, F-28? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. Amy?
Aye.
Andy? Aye. BJ?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye. Thank you. Maria?
Aye.
Thank you. Adrian?
Aye.
F-28 student wellness is passed for a first reading.
And those are the four that I have for a first reading.
Great. Thank you.
So we will have those warned for approval at our next board meeting, whatever we decide on the date for the next board meeting.
Okay. Fantastic. And then we will move on to negotiations. Adrian, do we have any update?
We really don't. We're still on hold, sort of waiting for the financial implications of this whole odd time to hit a little closer.
Yes. Thank you. Buildings and grounds, John isn't here. I think we heard from Gary. Do you have anything else to add, Gary, to that report? Is there anything else we should know?
No, there, we haven't had a meeting because of really our, our construction issues being on hold at this point in time. When that straightens out, we'll probably try to have some more meetings then.
Great. Thank you. And we'll move to community engagement. Maria, do you have an update for us?
Um, I have a sort of non-update update. We, I shared our draft plan at the last meeting and I've heard back from one, one and kind of a fraction of board members. And we have not been able to meet yet. So I'm expecting, we will meet before the next full board meeting and put last edits on that. And so if I could hear from anyone who is interested, that would be great.
Okay.
Then this week. And then I will, by next week, I'll let you know when the meeting is.
Okay, great. So anyone who has any comments, make sure you get them to Maria prior to that. Thank you. Thanks, Maria. And Andy, the numbers. He's unmuting.
Numbers.
There we are.
There we are. Thanks forever to respond to. Please unmute. Yes, I still unmuted. So the numbers, this is for payroll. Payroll dated April 10th, 2020 with an amount of $434,622.8. Payroll dated April 16th, 2020 for $4,669.17. Payroll dated April 24th, 2020, $426,343.38. Payroll dated May 1st, 2020 for $4,593.82. The total of these payrolls is $870,288.45. We don't have any pay orders, so I move that the payrolls be approved as read.
Um, I got an email from Mike Finch with pay orders. Um, I guess you didn't. Okay.
More than you have, I have, no.
Well, I just got a little while ago. Stan, do you know anything about that? No?
Do you want to read them?
Um, I have to find them. Hold on one second. And I could do that. I could, I could do that. Maybe I can't. Okay. It's, no, I can't. It's, it's like sideways and upside down. So maybe we will just, we'll just move with the payroll that we have and we'll, we'll review, have Doug and, and George review the pay orders and, and then I can sign them the way we would as if we didn't have a meeting, if that works for everybody. Okay. I'm seeing lots of nodding. So any discussion on the payroll motion that's pending? Hearing none, we will go for a vote. So Amy?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
BJ?
Aye.
Thank you. Len?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Thank you. And there's no one opposed. So we pass the payroll unanimously. Thank you. And now, Andy, what else do you have to share with us?
I want to give everyone and anyone listening an update on the finances, not only for the district, but the state, because it does have a very significant impact upon our funding. We have a variety of information that we know. We have some information we don't know, and I'll run through it. So what we know is that we are facing unprecedented times as are all the Vermont school districts, the state legislature, and Vermont government. Currently, our district is in good financial shape. The state, the state estimates the education fund, which is funded by property taxes, sales taxes, room and meals taxes. That is projected to have a revenue shortfall of $40 million at the end of this current fiscal year, and that ends June 30th. And for the fiscal year 2021, which starts July 1st, the state is estimating the shortfall will be between an additional $150 million to $250 million. Now, a side note to all these shortfalls, I read in this morning's papers that the state liquor sales revenue, tax revenue has actually gone up, gone up by 4.8 million dollars. So one little good note. The federal government has given Vermont $30 million in aid to school district education, but this money can only be used to cover education expenses that are directly related to the COVID virus. At this time, this money cannot be used by the states to cover tax shortfalls. There isn't talk in Congress of losing the restrictions, but this may not happen. And reading the news this morning, there are some lawmakers who oppose this, as lawmakers in Congress. There has also been a lot to talk around a larger, an additional aid package for the states to give to their educational programs, but this continues to be just talk. And again, I read this morning that some lawmakers are publicly saying it's time to press the pause button and not allocate any more money at this time. Now, before the economic downturn, the legislature was considering, the state legislature was considering an increase in the property tax of 4.8 cents to cover the increase in all the school budgets. The tax rate that's now being cited as necessary to cover the shortfall is an additional 26 cents. It should be noted that this 26 cent increase is for optimistic projections of the, of the shortfall. It could be worse. Fortunately, at this time, there appears to be no sentiment in the state legislature to impose such a tax increase. Districts have been informed that they cannot reduce the voter-approved budgets upon which the tax rate is based without another district-wide votes. Districts, of course, are not mandated to spend all their budgets and can spend what they see fit within limits of not exceeding their voter-approved amounts. At this time, it appears the legislature will fund the school budgets in full for the 2020 school year. We have heard from towns in our district that some taxpayers have begun to say they will not be able to pay their taxes in full for the coming year. The Mill River District, we have sent out letters of employment to our employees as laid out by the teachers and support staff contracts. The district does not anticipate that there will be a significant savings due to buildings being shut down and not in use since mid-March. While there are some savings from less electrical use, we're pretty much through the heating season and will only see a relatively small reduction in the amount of heating fuel used. To prepare for the possibility of not receiving full state aid or town funding, the board and administration has reviewed the 2021 budget to identify possible budget cuts. We have three categories of reduction. Each is more severe. For the moment, this document is on the shelf. We certainly hope that it stays there. But not wanting to be caught unprepared, we have done this work in advance. Now, that's what we know. Here comes the hard part of what we do not know. We do not know if the legislature will fully fund the districts for next year. We do not know if the legislature will increase the tax rate beyond the previous 4.8 cents, and if so, by how much. We do not know if Congress and the president will approve additional aids to the states for education, and if so, how much. We do not know if we will be reducing our spending. This is indeed an unprecedented time. We've certainly worked hard to prepare the district for uncertainties, and now we just have to wait. Any questions? I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. We'll keep our fingers crossed. No, you, you guys have done a tremendous job and thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy, for putting that together. I think it's really important, as we've discussed, to keep the public apprised of what the situation is, the best that we know it. So I think that if we can try and do these updates at each board meeting with any additional new information that we have, that would be the best thing to make everyone aware of what's going on. We're going to similarly do the same thing with regard to the school itself situation come for August and September, when school restarts, so that everyone's on the same page and we share as much knowledge as we have with everybody in the public, so that we're all moving forward and working in the best interests of our children and our students and our communities together. So I just want everyone to know that out there that's listening. I think we have a heating oil bid now, Stan. Yes?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We sent out bids for our heating oil and our propane. First bid that would be looking for acceptance of the contract was our heating oil contract. We received three bids on the heating oil from Johnson Energy for $1.799, Irving Oil for $1.49, and Champlain Oil bid $1.34, $35 a gallon for the high school and $1.45 for the rest of our buildings. So I would ask the board to make a motion to accept the bid from Champlain Oil, which is our current oil vendor.
Okay. Will someone make that motion, please?
Some move.
Thank you, Andy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, BJ. We'll go through with the vote, so starting with Amy.
Aye.
Thank you. Andy?
Yes.
BJ?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Thank you. So Stan, you have the heating oil bid for Champlain then?
Okay. The next up is our propane bid. And we have only a one bid for the propane, and that's from our current vendor, Irving Oil. And that bid for FY21 is $1.183 a gallon. So I would ask the board to move to accept the, the bid from Irving Oil for $1.183 a gallon for the propane.
Someone make that motion?
Some move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, BJ. We'll go through a vote. So Amy?
Aye.
Andy?
Yes.
BJ?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Okay. So you have the approval for the propane oil with Irving. Do you need anything else from us?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan. George is not with us tonight, so we don't have anyone to start us off for transacting other legal business. Does anyone have anything they need to add? Hearing nothing. It's very lonely without George being with us.
I reiterate a thank you to the teachers and admins.
Yes.
And parents. Thank you, parents.
Absolutely.
And BJ, I have a couple of suggestions for music.
Oh, we'll talk about that separately.
We'll talk, yeah.
Thank you. Agenda building. We have policies that we need to approve. And do we have, what else do we have? And do we have?
I think, Tammy, the, I need to talk to Len. We might have a couple of personnel things just to talk about, just internal things, not new hires or anything like that, but some internal stuff, some shifts. And obviously, we hope to have more financial information. So I wonder if maybe keeping our regularly scheduled meeting on the 20th as scheduled with a, just a brief agenda, you know, which is kind of finance oriented, might be a good approach if the board is willing.
Sounds good to me. I think that's important. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay. We'll move with that. And then you'll let us know if there's anything else that we need to add or anything that jumps up.
Yep.
So otherwise, hearing nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:12. Who would make that motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Liz. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Well, I have to, well, by consensus, we will do that. Okay. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Bye. Good evening. Bye.
Bye.